Hi, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, June 14th, 2017. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. First, I'd like to announce that this is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. So if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, absent tonight are board members Ron Bondi and Jim Gould. So, sitting on our hearings tonight will be our four regular board members and alternate, Brad Pittsley. So Brad, would you read the first new hearing?
Opening the hearing on 115 Old Brickyard Road. Owner Lisa P. Merritt.
Can you put your mic up a little closer? I can't hear you.
Okay. Opening the hearing on 115 Old Brickyard Road. Owner Lisa P. Merritt requests a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for demolition of two existing masonry porches and replace with wood porch and wood deck on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 72, parcel 20, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi. Come right up to the mic and, for the record, if you would give us your name and address.
My name's Lynn Dawn, and I'm here on behalf of my sister Lisa Merritt. She's just recovering from surgery. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here. So, she is proposing that she'd like to demolish the two existing masonry porches that are there on the property and construct two wooden decks.
Yeah, I rode by the other day, and I didn't really see them. I guess I didn't look very hard. So, there's one on one corner and one on the other.
There is. Yep, at each entrance. And so, and then, you know, they're in disrepair, and they're small, and she's looking to put in on the entrance facing Old Brickyard. She's looking to put in a seven-foot by eight-foot platform. I have a couple of, you know, photographs. I don't know if they're not great, but just showing where, like, the outline.
Gotcha. So it's just gonna be a deck?
Yeah. And she's actually raising the grade as well, so it'll actually just be one step down onto the ground, so it'll just be like a seven-foot by eight-foot, and then eight-foot by twelve-foot on the other entrance.
And the other one's gonna be a deck also?
Yes.
Pretty straightforward, is right?
It's filling in those corners.
Basically.
Not getting any, nothing's getting closer or further.
No. Scott, any questions on this?
I don't.
Bill?
No.
Dom, anything?
Nothing.
Brad? Take a peek. Any issues?
No.
Anything written by any departments?
Okay. No questions by anybody here. Let me read the comments, and then we'll see if there's anybody in the audience has any questions or concerns or comments. Okay, this is from the conservation department, and it's regarding the hearings for tonight. 115 Old Brickyard Road. Property is not within the jurisdiction of conservation. Okay, this is from the Board of Health. No comment. This one's from the inspections department. The area is zoned R3. This property is also within the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a written finding on 174-17 to replace two existing masonry porches and replace with wooden ones, wooden decks, whether it is making it more non-conforming or not. I don't see any issues with that. Do we have any other comments I might have missed?
Nothing I found.
Anybody in the audience? Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Bill, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Written finding on 115 Old Brickyard Road. Owner Lisa P. Merritt's request for a written finding, excuse me, under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the demolition of two existing masonry porches and replace with wood porch and wooden, a wood deck on property located in R3 zoning district, map 72, parcels 20, Mashpee, Mass. And this motion is conditioned on the following. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Law 48, Section 6. It's conditioned on the proposed septic system upgrade plan, 115 Old Brickyard Road, Mashpee, Mass, prepared for Ranger Construction, 46 Kroll Road, Falmouth, East Falmouth, Mass, 02563, Engineering by Engineering Works Incorporated, 12 West Crossfield Road, Forestdale, Mass. Scale is one inch equals 20 feet. Drawn by PTM, job number 117-17, date 2/11/17, checked by PTM, sheet one of two. And it's also conditioned on all town departments. Comments previously read in by the chairman.
Okay. One thing that is not on this plan is the actual size of the decks. So why don't we put them in there? Closest to Old Brickyard Road is going to be?
Seven feet by eight feet.
So the eight feet is coming towards the road or parallel to the road?
The seven feet is coming towards the road. The eight feet is running parallel to Old Brickyard.
Seven by eight. Okay, and on the back?
Eight coming off the house, eight, and then going, eight going parallel to Kapewak, and then 12 going up.
12 is gonna be parallel to the paved driveway?
Correct.
And eight?
Coming out.
Coming out. All right, so that's one. So we got eight feet. Seven feet.
Do you want the size of those decks part of the motion as well?
Absolutely. So why don't we amend the motion to, and you can?
Motion also will include, a deck facing Old Brickyard Road will be eight feet by, what does that say? Seven feet. And the deck closest to the paved driveway will be eight feet by 12 feet.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, Brad, would you read the next new hearing?
Opening the hearing on 53 Mercantile Way. Petitioner Capewide Construction, Inc. requests a special permit under Section 174-24 (C) and Section 174-25G (6) (14) of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 7,440 square foot storage warehouse building consisting of six separate bays on property located in an I-1 industrial zoning district, map 88, parcel 86, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Drywall Masonry Supplies, Inc.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Father Record Kevin Corrigan. Representing the applicant Capewide Construction, Inc. With me this evening is Joel J. Cuero, who is the principal of Capewide Construction, in connection with this application.
Is that mic not working? It's flashing, Mike.
Hold it. Is that, is that better? Working now?
I guess.
Okay.
The box isn't talking to me now.
As shown on the plans that have been submitted to the board, the lot in question consists of 76,500 square feet approximately, and has 225 linear feet of frontage on Mercantile Way. You also see that it has industrial drive as its rear property line. The site is located in the I-1 zoning district, and the lot is largely populated with scrub pine and oak indigenous to our Cape Cod area. The applicant is proposing to construct, as the advertisement quite clearly points out, a 7,440 square foot building. It's a one-story building, typical of the buildings, a lot of the buildings that have been constructed in the industrial area. It has concrete pilings with a wood frame and metal skin, your typical Morton metal building. The building requires special permit relief, as does the proposed uses in the building. We have applied for specific uses under 174-25G subsection 6, which allows for wholesale use and storage in a roofed structure within the I-1 zoning district, and also under Section 1725G subsection 14, which allows for contractor bay uses within the specified building. 174-24C is the general special permit by law that sets forth the criteria. I have provided the board with a pretty detailed breakdown of what those criteria are, but in general, they all boil down to interests that relate to public health, safety, and welfare. I would suggest to the board that the proposed uses are consistent with other uses that have been previously permitted in this industrial zone, and would not threaten or otherwise adversely impact the uses that are intended, or the interests that are intended to be protected under 174, 175-24C. This project has gone before the site plan review committee, has received a positive recommendation from site plan review. We also submitted our plans to design review. A design review, however, was unable to achieve a quorum, and as a result, you do not have a recommendation from the design review committee. One of the things that was brought up, and that was discussed at site plan, was the fact that we are locating parking in the front of this building as opposed to the side of the rear, which is typically one of the parking criteria set forth in our zoning bylaw. However, Section 174-37 does give this board the discretion to permit parking to be located in locations other than beside and behind the building, provided the board believes that the overall site and design is aesthetically better and also improves safety concerns. I suggest that rather than looking at a series of large overhead doors where this building constructed perpendicular to the road as opposed to horizontal, that presenting our parking in close proximity to the offices that are anticipated to be located in the front of these particular bays is more aesthetically pleasing than looking at those garage doors. And also, rather than have persons walking around the building for purposes of accessing those doors from parking located beside and behind the building, is also, from a safety perspective, a better configuration. I would also suggest, as you can see, this lot is much larger at the front and narrows at the back, so by having to rotate the building to accommodate parking to the side and the rear, I suggest, taken into consideration, the drainage scheme that is being proposed might be very difficult to do and probably would involve much more disturbance of the natural growth on the lot. All that being said, as I said, as I suggest to the board, the building and the proposed uses are consistent with other uses that have been previously permitted and buildings that have been previously permitted in this industrial zone, and we would respectfully ask the board to grant the relief that has been requested in connection with the special permit application, just to give the board a brief look at what the building is proposed. It is a single-story building, although you do see windows on the second floor, but that is largely for architectural considerations and aesthetics and additional light.
Where's the front of the building, on the bottom? Gotcha. Okay. So there's gonna be, what, total of six bays?
That's what's proposed at the present time. It might largely depend upon the types and number of tenants. There is a tenant that has expressed some interest, who might take up more than, more than one bay, so it's entirely possible that we may have fewer bays, but the maximum number that we're anticipating would be six.
Okay, and what's the required parking?
I believe it's 10 spaces, I think is what we're providing.
Is it on these sheets somewhere, probably?
Well, it shows parking.
It shows, should show on the plan, I believe, at the top right-hand side of the plan. It basically indicates that the 8.26, 8.26 spaces are required, and nine have been provided. And one handicap space.
Maybe that is a spot. It's just, with one, two, three, four.
It says eight.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I just don't know where the, where you're looking. What page?
Page C3. It's the second page, really. It looks like one's not a space, it's blocked out. It just shows.
Gotcha.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine.
One being a handicap spot.
Okay. I assume there's a dumpster on site, somewhere?
There is a location, I believe, dumpster shown on?
On the back right corner.
The back, halfway down.
Yep.
The lot line.
It's a proposed dumpster and concrete pad.
Excellent. What about lighting? Outside lighting?
I think most of the lighting that's being proposed is lighting on the building, is it not?
Yes, right indeed. How do you, just in front of the building?
Yeah, grab the mic, and just for the record, your, your name.
Good evening. Joanne Junket, Capewide Construction. The lighting will be a couple of two or three lights designed by Eddie on the front, and the rest will be out on the building by the doors.
Okay, and they'll be shielded, so they'll be?
Shielded, yes, yeah.
Okay. What colors are you gonna do?
Building?
Yeah.
Black and white. Black roof, white siding with the white wind scory, with the black wind scory.
Okay.
Roof is black, this is white, and the bottom, he is all black.
Okay, can I take a peek? Now, the edge of the windows having like shutters or something?
It's just like an accent on black when a white. I did a building right next to my building, and now the same kind of look. It's just like a nice accent to have the black.
It's an attractive building. I know the building you put up a couple of years ago. It's?
It's right next to, so on?
Capewide Enterprises.
Right next to my own building. It's 161 Comerius Street, so it's a white, white siding with a black.
Yeah, it doesn't look as commercial as a lot of buildings do.
These are all the questions I was gonna ask at the meeting I didn't make. Apologize for that. Mike, did you have a question?
Yes, I have two questions. Counselor, in your description, I just want clarification, that way there's no misunderstanding. According to the images being passed around, you said windows on second floor, that's not really the case here. It's just, there's no second floor. That's correct. I want that to be clear. That is. All right. The other question I have is, there's no office at all at this location?
I think some of the bays may have office space that will be part of the unit.
Well, well, let me rephrase the question then. But there's no office for the company that's watching the building? That's not a deal.
Is there office for my, for my?
All right. There's an office for your building, and what I want, the reason why I'm going this direction, because of a conversation that we had that you weren't privy to, so I just wanna make sure, that the handicap parking space is gonna be the one that's closest to that office?
That's correct.
That's why I want to be part of the record.
Excuse me, Mike. This is gonna be my office?
Yes.
And that's gonna be the handicapped employee in front of you?
Right, now, does that reflect the plan that's here or no?
The plan shows on the opposite side.
That's a mistake.
There we go.
Look at that plan right there. You'll see the handicap spot?
Yep, that's still a little mistake. The handicap should be here.
Okay, so the handicap spot's gonna be at the other end?
You can't, you can't have Eddie change anything to your guys' car.
Okay, 'cause I have to sign this off, so bring in this page with it fixed, so I can sign it.
Matt is not around. He had a debt with his family, so he didn't, you know.
Okay.
See, I just didn't wanna have a problem later on. That's why I wanted the clarification.
That's fine.
What type of industry are you going to rent to, or are you gonna rent these or sell them?
I'm gonna rent, I'm gonna try and do dry storage.
C3, C3.
What I'm trying to do is just be very nice and clean, no landscapes, no builders. I'm gonna, my office is gonna be the only building, office.
So there'll be, like, no manufacturing, anything like that? How about outside storage?
Outside storage?
Will there be any outside storage?
No. It's just like a normal outside storage, nothing more.
Okay.
It's gonna move in front of the unit?
Right, I guess really the question we're aiming at here is whether there's gonna be storage of construction material, you know?
That's what I thought.
Because you look for contractors, yeah, put it there, so, just so we're clear.
Have the activity on the inside of the building. If, I suppose, if it appears that there's any difficulty in acquiring tenants, and you may find a tenant who wants outside storage, then we would obviously have to come back to the board to deal with that.
Okay. Now, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. When they rent to somebody, depending on what they're doing, they need approval?
Yes, they require a certificate of occupancy.
Well, depending on what they're wanna put in there?
It doesn't matter. You can have one contractor come in right after the other. It has to get a new certificate of occupancy. The building code doesn't distinguish between whether the uses are different. It's more important when the uses are different, but if you've got Joe Contractor Yard, you know, first is in Bay 1, he pulls out, then John's contractor wants to come in, he's gonna have to get a certificate of occupancy.
But where I'm going with this is, let's say we get somebody in there, and all of a sudden, a guy wants to open a paint booth and paint cars. You see where I'm going with this?
What's the use?
So it's the use that I'm talking about here?
It's a change of use, then. What's the use? Is it strictly contractor base?
We've applied for a wholesale storage and contractor bay use.
Right. So you couldn't do it?
So once, if that attempts to change, that changes everything.
If there were, if there were other uses that are within the allowed tables of uses under the bylaw that we have not applied for, we would have to come back to the board to get the appropriate permit for those.
Okay, everybody? Good with that?
Most of, excuse me, most of this, what I'm gonna, gonna try and do is, I'm gonna have a bathroom, a rough bathroom in each bay, but I'm not gonna pour the floor until I have my tenant lineup.
Yep.
I'm, I pretty much think I have two tenants to take the whole building besides myself just for storage, so it's easier for us.
Yeah, one of the comments that we're going to read talks about that, so we'll get to that in a second. Anybody?
Just the only questions I have are drainage, anything that's to be approved for drainage? Like, we had in the past?
Let's see what they, let's see what Board of Health says.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by drainage? You're talking about outside, inside?
Yeah, parking lot drainage.
Oh, parking lot, well.
Do we have to have the, Charlie Raleigh has to prove anything or look at anything?
I think it's all consistent with the DPW, State Commonwealth of Massachusetts requirements. You can see the large drainage swales into a drainage area, which is coming from?
I say no, if anyone had it, prove it. Same thing with fire.
Well, let's, let me go over the comment from the Board of Health. 53 Mercantile Way, Board of Health comments, "The septic and site plan must be approved by the Board of Health. The plans have been reviewed primarily at preliminary and at the site plan review. The proposed use is warehouse, but if the building is split up into separately leased areas, the plumbing must be roughed in to accommodate bathrooms for each potential leased space."
He said he's gonna do that.
Yep.
Should I have to be a condition?
And if I may add something?
Please.
All right, going back to your question about uses. If you look under the zoning bylaws, the definition of a contractor bay, premises in an enclosed building used by a contractor or subcontractor for storage, equipment, and supplies, fabrication of sub-assemblies, and parking of wheeled or tracked equipment customarily used in the trade carried on by the contractor. That's the definition.
I'm gonna read that in, well, I'm gonna read that section into the record. Not, not those words, but that, I'm gonna.
Right. Well, just because the question came up about?
Correct.
Uses, I just wanna make sure.
And I'm gonna?
That's the section we applied for, I believe.
And I'll state in the motion that this approval, if we so give one, will cover those two, those sections that you've applied for. If you have a change and want something in the use statement?
Different use.
Other than that, you'd come back before the board.
That's understood.
Okay, well, I'm at it. Why don't I read conservation? Let's see, 53 Mercantile Way. Property is not within jurisdiction. I read the Board of Health. Let's see, inspections. 53 Mercantile Way. The area is zoned I-1 and is within? The area is zoned I-1 and is within the part of the property, is within the part of the property is in post-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as low. The applicant is seeking a special permit to allow for construction of a 7440 square foot building for both warehouse and contractor yards. Anybody else have questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, Bill, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve fifty-three Mercantile Way's petition from Capewide Construction Inc.'s request for a special permit under Section 174-24 (C) and Section 174-25 (G) (6) and 14 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 7,440 square foot storage warehouse building consisting of six separate bays on property located in an I-1 industrial zoning district, map 88, parcel 86, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Drywall Masonry Supplies, Inc. This motion, the board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Law 40A, Section 9. And also specifically meets the criteria as applied for under Section 174-24 (C) and Section 174-25 (G) (6) and 14. Any other uses will require applicant to come before the board for additional approvals. This is also conditioned on the plan titled Existing Conditioned Plans. Prepared for Capewide Construction, Inc., 759 Thalmouth Road, project title fifty-three Mercantile Way, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Sheet number C-2.0, date April 28, 2017, scale one inch equal 20 feet, drawn by SDM, checked by MWF, job number 2017-009. File 2017-009-FCEC, excuse me, DWG. Prepared by Baxter Nye Engineering and Surveying Registered Professional Engineers, 78 North Street, third floor, Hyannis, Mass. Stamped by Matthew W. Eddy, number 43183. Also on a building plan for Capewide Construction, Inc., Morton Buildings, Inc., office Norton, Norton, Mass. Job number 122-069152, drawn by BG, date 4/25/2017, not checked, scale as noted, sheets number S-3 of, through what, S-12. It's also conditioned on all town departments, comments already read into the record. Also, it's page-
C-3.
C-3?
To be replaced.
Will be revised and replaced to reflect the handicap space moving to the front left of the entry door.
Excellent, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Nice plan.
Kevin and I will be coming here in the next few months, small company.
Very good.
Very good.
Just if you would, as quick as possible, get this new sheet over. Thank you.
It's good to see.
Thank you.
Here's that there.
They had all the criteria, can you put in the wording in that?
Absolutely.
So that it will cover all the things like public health and all of those words?
Ah, yes, trash, I just wanna read about special municipal employees. Oh, that's a problem, downside here. It's okay? Signed above Ron's name.
All right. Well, sir? All right, Brad, would you read the next new hearing?
Opening the hearing on 29 Payamps Road, owners La Cava Family Two LLC requests a variance from the lot size requirements under Section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a single-family residential use on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 59, parcel 11, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, I'm the sort of board, follow the record, I'm Kevin Corrigan, and I once again have the pleasure of representing La Cava Family Two LLC in connection with the petition that is before the board this evening. Provided the board with a pretty straightforward-
Mike?
Pretty straightforward summary of the history of what has occurred here, but I'll be brief and run through things rather quickly. In February of 2004, I appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals for purposes of securing a variance relief for seven lots that were situated along Payamps Road. These lots were developed by the La Cava Family Two LLC, and due to downturn in the economy after 1985, they were unable to market and sell those lots, and I came here and asked the board for variance relief because the zoning had changed since the time that they had been approved and the protection afforded under the subdivision control law had expired. If the board recalls, the town modified its zoning to require 80,000 square foot lots in this particular R5 zoning district. So at the time, the board did grant us the appropriate relief to build on seven or to sell those seven to be built on for single-family residential purposes. Four of those seven have been sold and were built on, as you can see on the assessors map that I have provided to the board. Three lots remain. I have also highlighted those three lots on the subdivision plan that I have attached to the application, and I have also highlighted the lot in question that we're seeking the variance relief for in this particular instance. My client came to me, having represented him before, and had inquired whether or not I could represent him in seeking a relief for three of these lots that remained unsold. I counseled my client and suggested to him that I didn't think that the board would find favorably upon trying to protect three of these lots, so I suggested to my client that he take two of those lots, combine those two lots, thereby creating a conforming lot in excess of 80,000 square feet, which essentially leaves one non-conforming lot on the plan and on this street. So we are proposing at this juncture to combine the two lots that are adjacent to this lot, and by combining those two lots, we have one fully conforming lot under the R5 zoning criteria. That essentially leaves us with one parcel of land that's in excess of an acre and cannot be combined with any other non-conforming land on either side because everything around it either has been built on or once these two lots are combined, the lot next door will be a conforming lot. So we come to the board seeking relief for purposes of being able to develop this single lot in excess of an acre with the understanding that the other two lots that are adjacent to this would be combined to create one conforming lot. Couple of things that I pointed out back in 2004, and I've repeated in my presentation to the board, which has been submitted, is that this property is adjacent to the Southport condominium complex. The Southport condominium complex, as you know, is a densely populated area. However, it has its own sewage treatment facility which deals with subsurface treatment of waste, and one of the concerns, I suspect, when the lot size was increased from 40,000 to 80,000 square feet was due to the impact of septic systems and the like in this particular zoning district, although having been here many times over the years, the horse had particularly left the bond by the time that zoning bylaw changed and most of the lots in this particular R5 zoning district are substantially less than 40,000 square feet and certainly less than 80,000 square feet. So I would also point out that this property is also adjacent to the Quashnet Valley Golf Club, which is acres and acres of open space. So that there is not the septage being generated on the Quashnet Valley property that might otherwise be created where the Quashnet Valley property, a subdivision and the like. So in balancing the interests of the town versus the adverse impact on the owner of the property, and I believe the owner of the property, should the board act favorably upon this request, has a party who would have an interest in buying and building on this lot, the equity certainly must fall in favor of the applicant. One additional building lot on 43,000 square feet, which makes it probably one of the larger lots in this particular area, because most of the lots in this area were already developed at a much smaller size, certainly does not have a tremendously adverse impact on any of the interests that are intended to be protected under our bylaw and pose no threat to public health, safety, or welfare. That's essentially all I have to say, if the board has any questions, I'll try to respond.
Okay. So I'm looking at this subdivision plan, 1985.
That's correct.
So I guess the real question is, why didn't, when it changed, he had what, seven years, Kevin, I believe?
I'm not sure that that was-
Seven to start.
I, these may have been considered, I don't know, it's typically seven years if it's a subdivision plan. And certainly at least one of the lots looks like a subdivision, otherwise they'd all probably qualify as A and R, or approval not required lots, but this does refer to it as a subdivision. And I can't speak to what the economy was like back in the day, I mean, a lot of the lots, you know, they just were unable to sell for various reasons. I know the tax laws changed in 1986, which had a significant adverse impact on the sale and development of lots, and, you know, that's really all I can add.
All right, well, I did reach out to the town planner, and he did write me back yesterday afternoon. And it's actually, it's an email, and it's to Mary Ann, so it's from Tom Fadala, town planner. Dated Tuesday the 13th, which was yesterday, 4:06 PM. And it's regarding 29 Payamps Road, CBA case. Mary Ann, this is a request for a lot size variance. There are three adjoining one-acre lots under the same ownership in our five zoning district where the minimum lot size requirement has been two acres, 80,000 square feet, since the late 80s. Lots were not sold off separately and developed within eight years of grandfathering provided by the zoning statute. And not grandfathered, they must be considered merged for zoning purposes as one building lot as their combined size does not equal 160,000 square feet, which could be re-subdivided into two lots. As I indicated regarding all previous such variances, the state courts have ruled that lot size or frontage variances in such a situation are beyond the authority of the ZBA as they do not meet the three statutory requirements that a variance is based on unusual circumstances relating to the lot's soil conditions, shape, or topography. The shape of a lot is not to be confused with its size. Schaefer versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Situance, 24 Mass. App Court 966, comma 967, 1987. Per Bodrinsky, thus, a lot lacking sufficient area is not eligible for a variance based solely on this circumstance, end quote. He also cites Bruisi versus Bodrinsky, thus, a lot, no, excuse me.
You don't need to, you don't need to continue, I'm fully aware of what the law is, and I'm also fully aware that that law existed in 2004 when this board granted us the appropriate relief that we requested. I'd also point out that he's incorrect, that these lots cannot be divided into two conforming lots because the total acreage of these lots is 40, 120,000 square feet and can't be split into two 80,000 square foot lots. And he's also incorrect that the-
I think I said that.
An acre is not eighty, an acre, two acre lots would be 86,000 square feet, not 80,000 square feet.
Right. So let me read it again, it says, "They are not grandfathered and must be considered merged for zoning purposes as one building lot as their combined size does not equal 160,000 square feet."
Well, that would be two lots that aren't 160,000.
Right, so that's what he's talking about.
I'm not disputing that, I'm not disputing that, that's why I-
He also says, "Wish hardship arises solely in the fact that the lot is too small to qualify as buildable lot under zoning ordinance. Number 10 gives the Board of Appeal no authority to grant a variance such as-" Number 10 gives the Board of Appeal no authority to grant a variance, such as Mitchell versus Board of Appeals of Revere, 27 Mass. appellate court 1119, comma 1120, in 1989. Same as with the Odwrinsky lots on Wheeler Road." Hope this is sufficient.
I'm not disputing anything that the town planner has set forth in his letter, but I would suggest to the board that, you know, over the years I've sat here and I've watched the board grant variance relief, in many instances where the specific criteria of the law was not particularly met. And I fully understand what his position is, because he's the author of the 80,000-square-foot zoning when the zoning was changed to, in this R5 zoning district. It only becomes an issue, really, for the Board of Appeals if somebody were to challenge this decision, in which event the Board of Appeals would be successful. And if they had granted the relief, the Board of Appeals and the applicant, and typically it's the applicant that has to carry the ball in scenarios such as this, would lose. You know? I don't argue that point. I don't think that there's anybody who's... Unless the town planner decides to generate a lawsuit, I'm not sure there's anybody that would challenge our combining two lots, making one 83,000-square-foot lot, leaving one lot over an acre, as I said, particularly in an area where this lot is larger than, you know, most other lots that exist. So, I know the board has seen fit to look at the equities in various situations, and I've experienced it. I've been on the positive end of it from time to time, and I also understand the board's position and concerns, and I understand the town planner's position and concern, and I wouldn't have... I've applied for the variance relief, because that's the only way that we can possibly create or protect this remaining 43,000-square-foot lot. And as I said, the intention of the law is to create lots that conform as best as possible to zoning. A lot of the other cases that you have had have required lots to be combined, that even combining them, they don't come up to whatever the minimum lot requirement size is. In this particular case, we're combining two that does bring a lot into conformance at over 80,000 square feet, leaving basically an undevelopable lot at 43,000 square feet, which is why we're asking for the relief.
Well, you could certainly take all three lots and make them one.
Certainly could. Which would then make it probably the largest lot in the town.
I agree.
I agree.
I'm not saying that I support the current law. I never said that. But this is...
I haven't suggested that you do.
But the town planner was nice enough to state his opinion. I don't know if he stated it in the past.
I suspect he may have stated it back in 2004, when the board granted them the first time around as well, because I know that he has, over the years, stated the same opinion in virtually every case where somebody's come in to obtain a variance for an undersized lot.
Okay. Well, he took the time to write it. He's the town planner. It's a bylaw in this town. It's not a law that I made up.
I'm not disputing.
It's not a law that I voted for.
I'm not disputing that.
And I'm not going to even get into discussing whether I like it or not.
Well, I...
But it's the law, and it went in front of the town, and the town voted it in.
Right. I fully understand that, but the board has the ability to grant variance relief, and if the board decides to grant it, the board can grant it.
And when you... Normally, when you grant relief, it's based on the three topics that he mentioned in his email.
I'm not going to debate that issue, because I've sat here on many occasions, and I've...
In the past, you're right.
I've listened to applicants that have never brought up the three criteria as it relates to the grant of a variance, and I've seen variance granted. And the board has applied more of a practical approach in many cases, and a more common-sensical approach in many cases than adhering to the strict letter of the law. And I've certainly, as I said, benefited from that, and I appreciate the board's willingness to do that. You know, I can't...
I understand.
I can't argue much else.
I understand. As you know, we had this same case back less than a year ago on Wheeler Road. Went into the same exact thing. And the town planner also went and wrote a couple of emails on it, and, you know, the way we voted, we went with the town planner, so I'll just leave it at that.
Right. I was on that case, and I believe the lots did not bring any portion of the property up to a conforming size.
They were much smaller lots.
Correct.
Very small.
What about the one, the lot that just got approved over by Willoughby?
Maybe you could enlighten us on that.
That got approved.
The Belt and Suspenders lot. Why was that approved?
That was a lot that I believe that had the protection, because it had been in separate ownership.
That's right.
That was the difference.
Where these are not. These were never sold.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, they were covered by the statutory limitation.
Now I understand the Belt and Suspenders. Now it makes sense.
That's a rotten bond, V. And...
Is it rotten?
Yeah. No, but it actually... Okay.
Comments or questions, Brad?
No.
I think it's great to combine them one... Combining into one. Personally, I think they were buildable lots as a subdivision. I don't think it's a problem.
They don't either.
I'm just... You want to comment? That's my comment.
Right. I didn't say I liked the law.
Yep.
Tom?
What's going to be done with the other lots there?
Depends on what they do with it. Depends if it gets approved or not.
They're going to combine two to one, so it's a...
Three into one.
The other one, we're deciding if they can build on that lot as an undersized lot. That's what we're voting on.
If it's denied, then there's nothing that you can do with it unless you wanted to combine it with the other two.
Right.
Okay.
What changed the law?
Yeah, well, I don't see that happening.
Yeah. We can...
That law's been...
Well, that's why we're here.
The statute's been around a long time. The zoning changes, you know, from time to time, you know, so, I mean...
That's a big process.
If there were sewer or something that ever came into the town, then it would be...
Exactly.
You could change the zoning.
Sure.
But as I say, that's the lack of availability of sewer is justification for, you know, developing these large lot sizes and creating, for all practical purposes, snob zoning. The fact that we have a sewerage treatment plant that's taking care of all of the effluent on the adjacent property, and we have an open space golf course on the other side, we don't have the same considerations that those larger lot sizes were promoting for the reasons which they were.
Bill?
I don't like this at all. I think it's unfair, and I will go on the record that I think that this is unfair, and it's not the intent. It's the intent in general of what this was designed for. In this particular case, I don't think that was the intent. It's the law. It's what was voted in. I don't know if we're caught between a rock and a hard place.
I want to make a comment. I think when the law came in, there was a lot of developments coming into Mashpee. There was land being developed. It was growing fast. There's no buildable lots in Mashpee now. There's very little. I mean, there's land out there, but there's very little of it, you know? So, when a lot pops up, it just seems unfair that now, because of that old law, because the development was so fast, that they're getting...
Well, the law's been in place for how many years now? Late 80s?
Yeah, but nothing's changed since then. But at that time, there was a lot of development. There was developments going in all over the place. There's no developments going into Mashpee. There's no land.
The other thing is, they could have been sold, and they could have been built upon.
I understand that.
They could.
They could... This could have all been solved.
I understand that.
And it puts us in a high place. And I agree with Bill. I don't like this law.
And I'm sure they didn't read all those... We don't know what the homeowner, the owners of the property were reading or knew about back then. We don't know if they knew that they had to do it or was an issue. We don't know. Just my opinion.
Comments, Mike?
For starters, we just read one comment out of a bunch of them. With that being said, the board has to be consistent. Whether or not we're in agreement with the way a bylaw is written, it's up to either the board or the people of this community to reach out to the town to ask for a change. I mean, they were created, whether it was 80,000, 100,000, they can bring it either higher or lower, as, you know, council knows that as well as I do. As long as you don't go below 5,000 square feet, life is good. So...
I agree.
You have to...
Be consistent.
Be consistent. And the other other choice or suggestion I can say is, if you feel the board needs more time to deliberate, I say do a continuance. That's the only other thought I can give you.
I think everybody's got their opinions.
No, I understand that.
I mean, that's my... I think they're going to change their mind.
I'm just going out there because...
Everyone's going to vote the way they're going to vote. No, I appreciate that, but I think people on the board, as one board member, I'm not going to change my mind from what I'm thinking now and what's going to happen if we have a continuance. So, that's my opinion.
Does anybody on the board need more time to think about it? Okay. Anybody in the audience have any... Come right up, if you would. Name an address for the record.
Sure. I'm Marius Dehalian. I live in Mashpee. I've been in Mashpee for about 15 years.
I'm sorry, you have to grab a mic.
If you would.
And...
What's your address?
8 Blair Circle, Mashpee. I've been looking at this lot, the subject lot we're talking about, with the thought of, you know, purchasing it and building a single family for my own family. We grew our house in Mashpee. I have a household of five, my wife, and I, and three kids, and to Scott's point, there's absolutely no land left in Mashpee to build. It's just, you know, talking about hardship, and I understand the, you know, impact or potential negative impact to the environment from, you know, discharge of sewage and stuff like that. I totally get, and I'm on board with that, but at the same time, I would recommend that we also consider hardships for, you know, Mashpee residents who need to upgrade. We live in a 1,200-square-foot residence in Mashpee, which has been fine, but we have young kids that, and we just need to expand a little bit, and this is a great opportunity for us to do so. I've put an offer on this lot, on this piece of land, to purchase it. I would not be able most likely to afford the other two combined, which would be, you know, offered for sale at a significantly, you know, higher price, but this would be something that I'm willing to buy and build and stay in Mashpee and continue to pay taxes here. So, I would recommend that we give some consideration to that aspect of it, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a great point, because there are single-family lots that are undersized because they're in Willoughby or New Seaberry. They fall under a special permit. I don't know what they fall under, but they're very expensive. You know, and though it's... That's, for lack of a better word, it's for the wealthy.
Let me ask you... You can't use money as...
Criteria.
I hear what you're saying.
But I don't think it's fair to the town, the residents.
That's what the problem is, but the town is what...
I know. It voted it in... But it voted it in years ago, and some of us are trying to, you know, you're chasing people out of the town. If they're... If they grow out of their house, and they need to... They want to stay in Mashpee. They like the school system. They want to stay here, but they can't afford the land because there's nothing that they can afford, they're going to leave.
Well, once again, sometimes, some communities, and whether you want to not call them the snob zoning, if they want lots to be so big so they don't get overdeveloped, it's...
They're beyond that.
But it's up to the town to make that decision. I understand. Now, the question comes down to is, whatever way the board decides to vote, it's like I said, you've got to be consistent.
Yep. I hear what you're saying.
Kevin, one thing I don't see on here is your plan to combine those two lots.
No, we're not going to combine them unless the board denies them.
No, I saw something in here.
We said that...
I don't see it on this paper.
We haven't submitted a formal plan, but the intent is to combine two lots.
He wants the mic, yeah? Or he wants the mic, yeah?
We haven't submitted a formal plan to the planning board on that matter, and I'm not sure we'd have to. I think the building department could actually accept a billing application with a billing across a lot line if your intent was to combine it, but if the board were to see fit to grant the relief we requested, we would certainly expect a condition that the two adjacent lots, as we've represented, would be combined. We thought it best to create one conforming lot at 80,000 square feet, as opposed to two non-conforming lots at 60,000 square feet.
So, you can... What you've done is created one conforming, one non-conforming...
That's correct.
As opposed to two non-conforming.
As opposed to three non-conforming.
So, you've got one as a jobet, and the other one is a...
Right. Exactly. Which I thought was the best approach. Now, maybe I was wrong.
Well, would you like to make a motion, Bill?
You still have to read all of them.
Excuse me. Let's do that. Thank you. All right. Okay. Conservation says it's not within our jurisdiction. Border Health says, no comment. Inspections. Area is zoned R5, and a majority of the property is within the pre-contact archaeologically-sensitive area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a variance on 17431 regarding the short of required 80,000-square-foot lot size for this lot. The lot is 43560, stated as one acre lot, short 36440 square feet on lot size. Anything else?
Would you make a motion? Making this motion in the positive, as we have to make all motions, and then we'll have to vote on a yes or a no. Make a motion that we approve. 29 Payamps Road, owner, Lakava Family LLC. Request for a variance from the lot size requirements under Section 17431 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a single-family residential use on property located in our five zoning district, map 59, parcel 11, Mashpee, Mass. The board has determined that the applicant meets all of the conditions of a variance under Mass. General Law 40A, Section 10, and it's conditioned on a site plan. I'm assuming that's the plan that you have in here, Kevin. Site plan, Quashnet Heights, sales plan, Quashnet Valley, Gold Course, Lot 7, Lot 6, and Lot 5.
That's a subdivision plan, right?
Right. And it's also conditioned on all town departments' comments.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Brad, how do you vote? Yes or no?
I think I vote no.
Okay. You're against it.
Yes.
You're a yes.
Oh, a yes. I second it.
I'm a no. So, we have three yeses and two nos.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Yes.
Well, it wasn't approved, though.
I'll pass that along.
Good job. I'll stamp it.
Yeah.
You have to sign the right line, too.
Take that.
I've got to sign the right ones, I think.
Yeah, you also got to make sure you check the right box.
Just check the right box.
Yeah.
It's only checking the box.
You check, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're supposed to sign it.
You're signing the right...
Yeah, you just sign the right spot.
Yeah, yeah, okay, right.
Sign the right spot, and he checked, yes. I'm sure Tom checks. I mean...
You were in favor, so, yes.
Brad, you checked no. Sign the right spot, and he checked, yes. I'm sure it checks, I mean-
You were in favor, so yes.
Brad, Brad, you checked no.
All right, Brad, would you read the next new hearing?
Opening hearing on thirty-two Gia Lane. Owners, Michael G. Flood and Catherine A. Flood, request a side yard variance under section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to replace an existing deck with an enclosed four-season room on property located in an R3 zoning district, map one oh four, parcel forty-one, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi.
How are you, Michael Flood, thirty-two Gia Lane?
Hi.
Like was said, I have a twelve-by-twelve deck off the back of my house, and I'm looking to move it over one foot and keep the twelve-by-twelve size, but make it a four-season room. As of right now, I am nine feet, one inches off the property line, and I'm looking to move it to eight feet off the property line. I guess the reason why we're having this conversation is, my survey told me is back in, I think it was seventy-two, when they built the subdivision, they poured the foundation in the wrong spot. So what they did is they, Rob and Peter's give the fall, as you can see, by eleven feet, to make it to fifteen feet on the driveway in the house, they extended it into the neighbor's yard, and then in the backyard, they gained back the eleven feet. I think I have forty-four feet on the other side of the house, forty-eight feet on the other side of the house.
Forty-six, eight.
Forty-six, eight.
Forty-six, eight. I don't know why they put the-
House is way off to the-
Yeah.
They really, yeah. No way near the middle of the lot, or, I don't know what the-
And the only reason I'm looking to move over a foot is aesthetically. If you-
Squeeze the house on it.
Approach, I have stairs going down here, and it would just make a straight wall on the side of the house.
There's a twelve-by-twelve deck there now?
Correct, twelve-by-twelve.
And you wanna go with a twelve-by-twelve addition?
Correct.
Exact same spot?
Uh, move it over.
Oh, slide it over a foot, I gotcha.
See, we slid it over to here?
Oh, the deck doesn't go to the corner, I gotcha.
Right over to the corner.
It was nine-one, the new, the new distance will be eight feet.
Yes.
So-
And it's, and the sole purpose is that, it's just for aesthetic.
Seven feet of relief.
Gotcha.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, they're kinda handcuffed to where the house is.
Those son of tubes.
Yeah, they would call that a hardship.
I would too. I agree.
I'm good with that.
Questions or comments, any?
Nope, not for me.
No.
Yeah, I think this would qualify as a hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah, where they place the house, kinda handcuffs them.
Lot shape.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right, what do we have for comments?
Board of Health or Conservation, I think I threw my comments away.
Let's see.
It kind of aggravated it.
Is this seven-foot?
It's, um, seven-foot variance, right? What does it say on here?
Hey, conservation says not within our jurisdiction. Let's see, Board of Health. The property is in zone two and approved for and limited to three bedrooms. There is no floor plan submitted, so a number of bedrooms along with the proposed four-season room could not be evaluated for bedroom criteria for the proposed addition not to be a bedroom. A six-foot opening must be constructed and remain on the room, so you can't put another bedroom there.
Yeah.
Okay, inspections. Area is zoned R3 and is within the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as moderate. The applicant is seeking a variance under 17431 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the removal of the existing deck and construct a twelve-by-twelve four-season room. This structure will be four, short seven feet from the side yard setback.
So it's an addition, isn't it? What's a four-season room, it's an addition?
Seven feet short of the side yard setback.
Yeah, correct. Wouldn't that be an addition, just a regular year-round addition?
Yeah.
As opposed to a three-season room?
Yeah.
It's an addition.
Yes.
Yeah, so you just-
So a four-season's kind of huge, isn't it?
Four-season's an addition, there's no such thing as a four, that's, that's an addition. So you have to have a six-foot clear opening going in from the house to the space.
Yes.
But that's a Board of Health thing, anyway, it's not even us.
So they can't, they can't close that off.
Yeah, if it was a three-season room, you could have a door, you could have a slider, you could have whatever.
Maybe.
Maybe, well.
Well, that's a little Board of Health rule.
But it's not a three-season room, it's a four-season room, so, and he's fine with that. So you can put that as a, it's not a condition, it's a Board of Health thing. It's a building permit thing, it'll be on the plans. Conditioned on what Board of Health said, yeah. Board of Health, yeah, okay.
Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Anybody on the board, any last minute?
Nope.
Bill, would you make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve thirty-two Gia Lane. Owner, Michael G. Flood and Catherine A. Flood, request for a side yard variance under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to replace an existing deck with an enclosed four-season room on property located in an R3 zoning district, map one oh four, parcel forty-one, Mashpee, Mass. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Mass. General Law 40A, Section 10. This variance is for seven-foot side, it's a seven-foot side yard variance on the west sideline. It's also conditioned on a site plan, plot, plot plan of land prepared for number thirty-two Gia Lane, Mashpee, Mass, dated April seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Scale, one inch equals twenty feet by Stephen Doyle and Associates, forty-two Canterbury, Canterbury Lane, East Falmouth, Mass. Stamped by Stephen J. Doyle, professional land surveyor, four twenty-one seventeen. It's also conditioned on all town departments' comments previously read into the record.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
One of the bigger ones, please? Thank you. Is there another big, larger one floating around? You get another one?
Yeah, one of these.
Uh, down there. Oh, I got, yeah, I got one.
Six.
I'll send it back anyway, if you want.
I got it, I got it.
Oh, this is, that's not the standpoint anyways.
Okay.
In favor? Just, sorry?
What else we got here? I have to step down on that.
We don't have four.
I've stepped down on everything I've had before.
Yep.
I even- Review.
Okay, Brad, would you read the last, excuse me, the last new hearing?
So, opening the hearing on number one sixty-four, Captain's Row. Owners, Mark R. Galant and Robin Galant, request a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a ten-foot by eighteen-foot addition on property located in an R3 zoning district, map ninety-six, parcel twenty-eight, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, for the record, Steve Cook. We could do a design on project. I'm looking, Robin, on a small ranch-style house on Captain's Row, right on the Mashpee River. They're looking to put a small addition on the front of the house. The existing house was constructed in nineteen sixty, and it's angled to the property line. That's the reason that we're here, trying to build an addition on the front of it. You can see that the house is twelve-point-six feet from the right-side property line, and then trying to fit in an addition, it's been difficult. So we jogged it back where we're at thirteen-point-six feet, but still not meet the fifteen-foot setback. The house is not centered on the lot either, so it's all skewed to the right inside and it's angled to property line. So when they laid out in nineteen sixty, apparently they didn't pay attention to anything up there.
They probably didn't measure a thing, and said, "This looks good."
So, um-
This is easy to follow.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we're looking for, you know, approval to construct this addition. We already received Conservation Commission approval for this project, because it's within a hundred-foot buffer and it is in a flood zone. So the plans will meet all flood zone requirements for a lateral addition.
It doesn't get any closer than it did before. The house is already closer than, but because it's the fifteen feet, it's just over. Yeah, it's foot and a half, one foot four.
So you're not really looking for any variances, are you?
Well, yeah.
I mean, going closer to-
No, it's, it's still under fifteen feet, but the house is already less than that.
Yeah, so it was special.
House is twelve-nine.
Yeah, and the addition's thirteen-six, but he's still under fifteen, that's why you gotta come here.
Right.
They're looking for a written finding here.
Oh, it's a written finding, not a variance, sorry.
So you're looking for a written finding, whether that is more detrimental than what previously existed?
Yeah.
This is tricky to follow. So how close are you on the-
It's thirteen-point-six feet.
No, on the side?
The existing house is twelve-nine.
Twelve-nine, yeah.
On the other side?
I am upside down on this.
Oh, the other side is- We're not seeing the road.
Where's the road?
It's at the right, Captain's Row, it's-
Yeah, sixty, we're gonna be, the proposed addition's sixty-one feet from the street.
Addition's on the front of the house.
From the property line, and the right-hand side of the house is, you know, just under thirty feet.
Yeah, you're thinking the addition's on the back.
Do you have a full-page site plan?
Awesome.
There we go, that's what we need.
Beauty.
Oh, you got, you got, oh, that's, you didn't have one of these.
Oh, no, no.
You need one of these.
No, he's been piecemealing it over here.
You passed it down to us.
I'm looking at this.
Oh, yeah, that's why you're all messed up, okay.
I'm going, what?
Okay, that's gonna make life a lot easier for you.
Oh, here we are. All right.
We thought you were losing it.
This is the water out here, thirteen-six.
No, no, no.
All right, there we go. Okay.
What's the proposed addition to be used for?
A study and a bathroom. It has a gaped opening into the living room. It's the living room where it's being attached to.
Is it maxed out on bedrooms already?
Uh, yeah, it's a three-bedroom house, they have three bedrooms.
Did Board of Health make that comment? Yeah, there's building plans here, if you wanna see the floor plan.
It'll meet all the Board of Health criteria.
Yep.
Will not be considered a bedroom.
Yeah, it's on the plan, that's good.
Family room, bathroom. We talk in eighteen feet. You make it any, take out two more feet, it's like this. I'm saying, why bother? Doesn't become usable. As you can see. It's a, it's a single-story building?
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to get your six-foot opening if you had to make it, if you didn't have a bathroom.
Took another two, yeah.
Yeah, you'd be jamming it up.
Yeah, you don't-
Why bother?
Yeah.
And well, the house is already closer than that.
Closer than that.
And they did a nice job stepping it back.
Nine, this is thirteen, eight, six.
All right.
I mean, technically, I mean, they could've. Can ask for more.
Yeah?
Yep. All right, Scott, do you wanna read in the comments?
I don't have them in front of me anymore. I don't have them. I had them, I don't have them anymore. I threw a lot of stuff down a couple hearings ago.
Okay. Why don't I help you out? I'll help you out with it.
Thank you. If you wanna hand me, I'll read it.
I just don't wanna hog the mic. All right, let's see, this is from Conservation. This project has received Conservation Commission approval, no issues. Okay, comments from Board of Health. Okay, Board of Health comments. Floor plans were reviewed. A septic inspection is required due to change in footprint of house with a foundation. Property is approved for three bedrooms per two thousand five septic repair permit, but currently has two bedrooms?
That's the floor plans, Sean.
Yeah, that's all it said, too.
New addition is proposed with a six-foot opening. Property is not in zone two, so it is not limited by land area, only capacity of septic. Inspections. The area is listed, excuse me, the area is zoned R3 and is within the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as moderate. Property is also in the AE flood zone. Applicant is seeking a written finding on the one seventy-four seventeen to allow for construction of a ten-by-eighteen addition. The board needs to determine if the proposed addition would make this more non-conforming or not. Side yard setbacks are fifteen feet in this area. Anything else? Any comments from anybody in the audience? And for the record, you're near it.
A concerned citizen.
Bill, would you make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve one sixty-four Captain's Row. Owner, Mark G.
Mark R.
I'm sorry, Mark R. Galante and Robin Galante. Request for a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a ten-foot by eighteen-foot addition on property located in an R3 zoning district, map ninety-six, parcel twenty-eight, Mashpee, Mass. This motion is, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Law 40A, Section Six. It is conditioned on a site plan prepared for Stephen, Steve Cook of one sixty-four Captain's Row, Mashpee, Mass. J.E. Landry dash Cowley, P.E., Civil Environmental Engineering, PO Box three sixty-four, West Falmouth, Mass. What is that, assigned? Assignment?
I have no idea.
I don't wanna call it what it says.
Assessors' map. Wow.
Assessors' map, number ninety-six dash twenty-eight. Date, four twenty-seventeen. Scale, one inch equal ten feet. Drawn by J.D.R., job number two-eight-zero-four, sheet one of one. And also, house plans, first floor plan. New addition for Galante Residence, one sixty-four Captain's Row, Mass, Mashpee, Mass. Scale, one-quarter inch equals one foot. Date, five-four, two thousand seventeen. Drawing number A-one. Front elevation, right elevation and left elevation. Plan, drawing number A-two. And it's also conditioned on all town department comments that have been read into the record.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good luck.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
You too.
Thanks. I'll be back. It's done, it's done, it's over.
Talking, I'm confused.
Oh, he could, I don't know. He's one lot, I guess you can combine them all into one lot now. Yeah, you can't combine them to two, I don't think. Mr. Chairman, I will have to step down on the other business.
Okay.
Because I've stepped down on every other one that anyone's come through with.
I understand.
My question is, do I have to stay?
No, just come back.
No, I mean, do I have to come be here for the next two?
Are you part of the minutes?
Yes.
Oh, then I do, all right, I'll hang out. Okay, I'll hang out. My mom said visiting for a while for a couple days, but it's okay.
If you want to, three minutes before you have your discussion with me this time.
I don't think yours is gonna take too long. I don't think it'll be that long.
No, why don't we approve the minutes?
Are you okay with that?
I think, is that okay with you, Chairman?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'll, I'll hang out. It's, it's, it's fine. I'll, I'll hang out.
We can have the minutes up front if we want.
Why not? You can do whatever you want.
It's such a good-looking crowd in the audience, I wanna hang out, you know, and watch them and...
It's fine with me, let's approve the minutes. Somebody make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the May 24, 2017 meeting minutes.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Till then, I'm...
Have a good one.
Thank you.
No, we won't be able to adjourn without you.
Yeah, you can do that.
Were you part of the June?
Yes.
Oh, is that another minute?
Yes, two. Who's that?
Oh, sorry. Make a motion that we approve June 1, 2017 meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Scott.
Hi, Scott.
Thank you, everyone.
See ya. Take care, Scott.
Okay, are we all done signing?
We only have four, Jim.
Yes, okay. But this is a discussion, isn't it, Kevin?
Yes.
All right, so Brad, would you read the first other business?
Opening the hearing on 156 Waterway. The Board to review a proposed change to the building design and determine if considered a minor or major modification.
Hi.
I submit a letter to you, you should have it. Board granted our... How do we get a new microphone? I don't see those lights on, I'm not even sure you're on the...
No, she's telling me right here.
All right. At any rate, the Board made specific findings in connection with a raise and replace project at this location. As the project was progressing, it was recommended, because of the potential additional views that were available, to create a roof deck, which is essentially like a dormer. It's not, it's not on the top of the roof like a widow's walk or anything else like that, but it's to cut into the side of the roof and just create a small roof deck, which would allow some seating above, and it affords a view, I believe, of, of Nantucket Sound. So, that's essentially it. It doesn't change the location of the building, it doesn't change the actual occupiable square footage of the interior of the building. It's really an aesthetic change, and we're not increasing the height of the building or anything of that nature, so that's why we believe that if we, that it could be handled with the submission of the revised plan, just showing that roof deck, which is cut into the, the side of the roof.
Is there an issue with four-story living space?
Well, four-story comes under the definition of the Building Code. It's not open on all three sides, correct?
It is open, yeah.
All three? No, no, the, the, what's being proposed for the house?
Is it, is a deck cut into the...
No, 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 no. That's not the question he's asking. All right. The question he's asking is, the house, supposed to be built, is, is the foundation clear on all four sides? It's not. It's, it's what, one side open or two?
Open in back?
So, it's, it's basically your typical walkout.
And just for the record, if you would...
So, for the record, Tim Luff, Architect Associates, who designed the house. So, so basically, as much the, the way that we have a lot of those houses on Waterway, you've got a very steep sloping lot. The house was built into, into that slope, so that on the, on the front and, and basically kind of almost on two sides, you have, you have grade. And then the grade drops on the two sides, and then it's full walkout on the back. And before, before we started the project, we had, we had the story above grade issue determined, and I have a copy of the calculations. So, in order to get a building permit to start, we had to make sure and determine and prove that, that the amount of exposed grade on, on four sides did not, did not trigger a full story. So those calculations are here, and they were submitted in order to get a building permit. So, we wouldn't have been able to get a building permit if we had a sto, a full story above grade. So, we don't have a story above grade, that's, that's a non-issue. What we're talking about here is once, once the, as Kevin said, once the structure went up, the builder, who was standing on the, the ceiling joists at the time when he was framing, said, "Wow, we can actually see over Puppiness at Island and, and we can get a view of the water." And wouldn't it be nice to maybe scoop out a little bit of the roof here and be able to get a roof deck? Not, not actually put the, put the deck on top of the, the ridge, but scoop out. So, so what you're looking at there is a roof deck that's cut into the existing roof. The only thing that projects up out of the roof, if you were look at the, the roof plane from the side, from the gable side, is the railing, and not all the railing, only a fraction or a small piece of railing, about 10 inches of that railing would project out of the roof line. And then about the same for the dormer, about another 10 inches from the side. Other than that, from the side elevation, you wouldn't see anything, 'cause it's all scooped out. And then a small portion of that attic is finished, just to get the staircase and a hallway out to that, to the roof deck. So from the street side, from the left side, you see nothing. From the right side, you'll see a very small sliver, which I don't know if you have a copy, but I brought a copy and highlighted what, what look out.
Well, if I may, through, through the chair...
Yeah.
If you can approach and show to the Board, 'cause Kevin, I'm used to you having, you know, nice little pictures up here for everybody to see, but to illustrate exactly the area in question, 'cause it's not clear on this plan. Would you show it to the members, please?
Sure.
Slipping, Kevin.
I need the pictures on this one. All right, so this...
Yeah, you did.
This, this is, this is the right side elevation.
Okay.
So if we were on the street, and when we walked around the right side of the building, okay, that's the only thing that was visible on that side, and that small piece of railing that you see there.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, from the back, this is what you would see, most of which is actually sunken into the roof, but you would see that roof and you would see the railing that would project. Those are that piece and that piece, are the two pieces that would, would project out of the roof.
But it's the same height as the existing roof?
Yeah, we're not going, we're not getting any, any taller than, than the ridgeline. Like I said...
Not going above.
Yeah.
So you're keeping in conformance with Note 23 or something like that, and...
You have no issues?
I have no issues with that.
Okay.
But it's, it's, they're here because it's a change of what was approved.
How do, how do, what's the procedure for this?
Minor or...
Is it a vote type change or...
Major or minor modification, correct.
This is only four of us, do you wanna proceed with four?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's an architectural change, it would be no different than when we placed windows.
Right.
Something different in the building. And, and we have, in the past, unless the Board has changed its policy, allowed for these types of changes.
Yep.
Upon the submission of a new revised plan, so the Board has it in its file, and a request for allowing us to move forward with the revised plan.
Yeah, where is it?
57. It's Note 4, except for additional widow walks up to 100 blah, blah, blah.
No, I'm talking about major or minor change.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading.
The whole point why we're here.
Well, we're here to determine if it's a major or minor. And there's actual, you know, it's page 20. Yeah. So it's 17424C9. It's about minor and major modifications.
Actually starts on 21.
Correct.
21?
Page 21.
Top.
Top of the page.
A, minor changes to a site plan.
Maybe I have my old book.
I think you do.
You probably do, so it's probably 20. So look for 9A under 174. It's probably page 20.
Got it, got it, got it.
Yeah, so it says minor changes to a site plan, permitted project.
I might even suggest that that bylaw doesn't even apply, because it wasn't a special permit before we...
That's right.
But does say architectural details.
All right, well...
Yeah, but it says, yeah, it says, is to read further. Provided that said change do not violate the terms of said zoning bylaw, the terms or conditions of the original special permit decision or the provisions subsection 2 above, and they do not require approval other than the process described in B or C.
So, it, it was not a special permit?
No, it was a specific...
What guidance would you use to determine if it was major or minor, if you don't use this?
Well, I guess you, you could use that, but you could look at it as a change, an architectural change. I mean, if somebody was in and changes a window, you don't require people to come back.
Right. Oh, I, I agree with you, I think it's a minor change, I'm just looking for the...
I guess you would have to use that for guidance.
That's all we got.
Because that's, that's basically all you have. No change to the site at all. I mean, we're talking about inside the structure. So, you know, we talked to Drew about it, and, you know, he said, "Well, you know, it's in the building, we're not concerned about it."
Did the Board of Health comment on it, or no? I mean, if anybody really that would have a horse in the race would be Board of Health. Right, but if they say they don't have a comment, it just goes in your favor.
We, we did, we did bring it to the Board of Health, the builder did door to the Board of Health, and, and they said that they didn't have any issue.
They don't have any comments, they gave, gave us no comments, and...
Yeah, they, we didn't get anything writing, but, but it was brought to the Board of Health, and they looked at it and said, "This is, this is basically a hallway and access to your deck, so Mr. Harrington said, you know, there's not, no issues here for me."
How about Conservation?
Yeah, Drew, Drew said it's...
Because it says you should contact them, that's...
Yeah, we did.
You did.
Yeah, there's no change to the exterior of the building, so they were only concerned with what occurs.
I don't see any issues.
It's a change to the exterior, but not to the footprint.
Yeah, right, right.
So that we are having a conversation. If you want my opinion, I don't see a problem.
I don't either. But it talks about 5%, and this isn't 5% anyway.
No.
You read B. Impose change to the site plan of the project, which commends previous modifications, increases the square footage. You're not really increasing the square footage.
No.
For residents or non-residents.
Actually taken away.
Right. If this isn't minor, I don't know what is.
I agree.
Okay.
Does, does the roof framing have to change any for putting this in?
Yeah, we've got, we've got a reengineer here.
Okay. And if, if approved... Right, but if approved, our records will have to reflect the change in the framing.
Correct, and, and it's been, it's gone back to structural engineering, it's gotten the standard.
Okay.
So when, when the builder came in to talk to you about it, when he had a package, that's the new package.
Okay.
No, it's just gonna be a motion, whether it's a major or minor modification. Let's see, you just read in Conservation, did you?
Yeah, and the, the comment back from the applicant was they have reviewed, they have gone back to Conservation.
Okay, I don't see anything from Board of Health.
Nothing.
And I see nothing from inspections.
Because he's here.
So, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that the Board considers the building design and change to be a minor modification.
For what project?
For 156 Waterway, excuse me.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. Nice-looking house.
Do we need that stamped at all, or no?
Do we have to sign anything on that area?
I would think.
No. Okay.
Sign both, all of this stuff, I guess.
There's nothing to sign.
So it would be okay, it's okay, one of the, you know, general contractors will come back to amend the permit?
They have to wait 20 days, do they?
No.
No.
No, on this.
It'd be okay?
Ask the boss.
Oh, is he really odd?
Well, he's got it up, he's got the, the ruching goes on, and he can come back into it.
No, have him come in with the...
Read into the plan.
Right. Now, make sure we also get it on the disc. We have to change all the records.
Our copy and disc.
There we go.
Okay. We'll do. We'll do. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Don, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I think most of them will adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.